I'd like to call it the July 18th City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight, everyone. Delightful to have you use our conditioning instead of yours. These are the rules and procedures of our Plan and Zoning Commission. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the city council. The city council will hold a public hearing and make a final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats unless denials or conditional approvals are appealed. Please contact the city clerk and/or community development department staff for details on council hearings. Applicants tonight will be given 10 minutes to present their proposal, and then proponents and opponents from the public are allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker being allowed a maximum of five minutes. I might like to interject here that our public hearing on item number six, which has to do with the new city code, we will have a certain time allotment for that public hearing, since we will have at least two other issues tonight. But we will kind of get a feel for how many speakers we have and let you know where we are at that point. The hearing then will be closed, and the commission will decide and discuss and vote on the issue. And again, on item number six, tonight is just a public hearing, and there will not be action by the Plan and Zoning Commission until our August meeting. The hearing is then closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments should be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed, unless, of course, an individual member of the public or a member of the commission requests that that item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities, and encourage his participation in the city government. Assisted listening devices are available for meetings in this room. To better serve you, when possible, please notify the city at least three business days in advance at 2-834-209, should special accommodations be required. Plan and zoning commission meetings are broadcast on Media Cable Channel 7.1 or 7.2 for customers with that service. Transportation for City of Des Moines meetings can be scheduled to and from Dart Central Station at 620 Cherry Street. To reserve your route, please call Dart On Call Scheduling at 2-838-136. Calls for trips will be accepted up until 5:00 PM of the day prior to the meeting. Please be sure to mention in your request that you require transportation for the City of Des Moines meetings at this location. This notice is intended to comply with accessibility requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. All right, we do have a quorum established tonight. And is there action for the minutes of our June 20 commission meeting?
So moved.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving our June 20 Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand. All right, are there any abstentions? Got those. And any nay votes? Seeing none. Thank you. We will move to our consent items. Now, it's, okay, we'll go through. On the public hearing, it is my understanding that item number eight, request from Raleigh Cap Properties is requesting a continuance to August 15?
Yes, Chair, members of the commission.
Is the applicant present? All right.
We have a written request for the continuance from the applicant.
Okay. So is there a motion to continue this item to August 15?
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor in moving item number eight to our August 15 commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand. All right, are there any abstentions? Got those. And any nay votes? Seeing none. Thank you. We will move to our consent items. Now, it's, okay, we'll go through. On the public hearing, it is my understanding that item number eight, request from Raleigh Cap Properties, is requesting a continuance to August 15?
Yes, Chair, members of the commission.
Is the applicant present?
All right. We have a written request for the continuance from the applicant.
Okay. So is there a motion to continue this item to August 15?
I'll move.
Thank you. All those in favor in moving item number eight to our August 15 commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand. All right, thank you. Now we'll go to the consent items. Item number one on our consent agenda is a request from Des Moines Public Schools for vacation of Fremont Street from East 14th to East 15th, and for vacation of East 15th Street from Fremont to East University, to allow it to be assembled with the adjoining property. Is the applicant, or is the applicant present tonight and agreeable to this item being on consent? Agreeable to being on consent, all right. Is there anyone on the commission that wishes to, or is there anyone in the public, I'm sorry, who wishes us to pull this item? Okay, is there anyone on the commission that wishes to hear this item tonight? Seeing none, we'll keep that on the consent. Item number two is a request from Cotufos Auto Services for review and approval of site plan under design guidelines for vehicle display lots for property located at 1640 East Court Avenue to allow for expansion of the existing auto business with additional area for vehicle display lot. Is that, is the applicant present tonight? All right, is there anyone from the public that wishes us to remove this from consent? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who wishes to move this from consent? All right, seeing none, that will stay on our consent agenda. Item number three is a request from Des Moines Heritage Trust for the following actions for property located at 120 East Fifth Street, vacation of a 15 by 17 foot, 15.7 foot by 19 foot segment of the west side of East Fifth, to allow for a restoration of the existing historic depot building that would extend about 15 feet into the existing right-of-way. And number B, or letter B, a review and approval of the site plan, Des Moines Heritage Center, under design guidelines in C-3B districts, to allow restoration of the existing 2,000 square foot historic depot building for museum, heritage center, and construction of a one-story, 7,100 square foot assembly hall to the west rear of that site. Is the applicant for this item here tonight? And you agree for the consent of this item? All right, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to hear this item? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who wishes us to pull this from consent? All right, this item will stay on consent.
Madam Chair, I noticed that there are a number of staff recommendations. Apparently, the applicant is okay with all of those.
You're talking about item number three?
Yes, the one we just looked at.
So applicant, the question is, you are agreeable with all of the staff recommendations? You can just nod if that's a fact. He nods yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number four is a request from Des Moines Griffin Building at 319 Seventh Street for vacation of a four-foot by four-foot segment of air rights within the adjoining east-west alley, to allow for ventilation ducts attached to the upper portion of the building that would encroach over the alley. Is the applicant here tonight for this item? You're here, okay. Is there anyone, and you agreed to this item remaining on consent? Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes us to pull this item? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? All right, this item will remain on consent. Item number five is a request for review and approval of a preliminary plat McKinley Acres, a property located at 3,400, the 3,401 block of McKinley Avenue, to allow for replating of 2.16 acres of property into four lots for single-family residential development. This was previously approved on January 19, 2017, and that has, the approval has expired. Is the applicant here tonight for this item? Okay, and the question is, do you agree with this being on consent? Do you agree with this item being on our consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Here's the preliminary plat.
Okay, so if, if you agree.
Okay, then it's going to have to come off the consent agenda.
No, I consent.
Okay.
I'm good.
That's why we asked, we want to make.
I'll hold on to this and add it to our file, unless you want to.
No, they told me to bring them here and give them to you.
Okay.
Well documented.
Thank you, sir. Was there anyone else who wished to hear this item? All right, seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who wishes us to pull? All right, this item will remain on consent. That concludes our consent items for tonight, and so is there a motion to approve consent?
Remove consent.
All those in favor of our consent items one through five, please signify by raising your hand. Yeah, okay. Thank you. And then, you know, it's unanimous. All right, so we are now ready for a public hearing. Once again, I wanted to reiterate that item number six, which is the proposed zoning ordinance, planning and design ordinance, and citywide zoning map amendment, is not going to have action tonight. This is public hearing, and action on this item by the commission will be scheduled for our August 1st meeting. If you are interested in speaking, we do have a sign-up sheet, and we will try to, you know, accommodate as many speakers as possible. However, remember, we do have a couple of other action items tonight, and since we're continuing this anyway till August 1st, we'll try to keep that in mind. So, you're going to introduce the item.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Michael Ludwig, planning administrator. Tonight's a pretty monumental evening for the City of Des Moines. This is the first public hearing on a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance in 54 years, the city. 1965, actually, July of 1965 was the last time the city adopted a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning ordinance. So almost 54 years, obviously, to the date. Just a quick overview, Plan DSM was the city's comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2016. There were a lot of different plan elements that contributed to that plan, and they're shown on the screen here. At the very top of that is the Tomorrow Plan, which was a regional plan for sustainability for the Des Moines Metro. And so the Plan DSM effort was the local implementation of that regional sustainability plan, and hence the title, Plan DSM Creating Our Tomorrow. These are the plan elements that are contained in our comprehensive plan, land use, transportation, housing, public infrastructure, parks and recreation, economic development, community facilities, community character, social equity and implementation chapter. So this was a very broad comprehensive plan. It followed the principles of the smart, or I'm sorry, smart planning legislation at the state level at Chapter 18B of the Iowa Code, and there were recommended elements, obviously, to be in a comprehensive plan, and we followed that with this plan. So, again, I think probably one of the items that's on this list that was not on there was Social Equity Chapter, which was a very important chapter in our comprehensive plan, and that was a result of the substantial outreach that we did as part of that planning effort. Several directions came from that plan, directed growth, redevelopment, mix of uses and housing types, nodes and corridors designated on the map that are all linked by transit, so our land use map is linked to our transit, urban solutions to urban issues, and return on investment on public infrastructure. This is where we are today. Obviously, Plan DSM is at the top of this chart. That was the citizens' plan for the future of Des Moines. The council's Guide DSM document is a strategic plan that actually provided funding for other planning initiatives at the city, including the zoning ordinance. You'll also see on there Move DSM, which is our transportation plan, Live DSM, which is the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We have our CIP and programming that's also within that, and then our nodes and corridors and neighborhood plans. So our revitalization strategy would be that middle box. So as you can see, they're all, they've all been funded, and they're all plans that are under the umbrella of Plan DSM. They've been developed with, according to the principles of Plan DSM. As I said, the last comprehensive rewrite was 1965. 1926 was actually our first zoning ordinance adopted in the city, and there's a copy of it. There was a delay in adoption of their effect of the 1926 ordinance because the state had to adopt enabling legislation to allow cities to have zoning period. So Des Moines was ahead of the curve in that, in that time, but this is the third comprehensive rewrite in almost 100 years for the city. So why a new code? Since 1965, we amended the current code about over 300 times. It's not very user-friendly. There's conflicts in the document, very minimal design regulations. Certain uses that are necessary for sustainable neighborhoods are not included in this, in this ordinance today. The allowed density intensity isn't in alignment with our comprehensive plan, and many properties are not appreciating in value in Des Moines. So as part of this zoning ordinance project, we started out with a series of about 11 stakeholder meetings. Our consultant did. I listed who participated in those stakeholder meetings. There was a project direction report that was prepared in October of 2016 that provided direction to where we are tonight. These were just the items that were directed in that. And so the ordinance in front of you tonight is, is, is the result. There are two ordinances under consideration and a zoning map that constitute essentially our development codes or development regulations. Chapter 134 is zoning, and you'll see the items that are now proposed to be included in our zoning ordinance, obviously zoning districts, authorization for our zoning map. Uses of property are listed in the zoning chapter, wireless telecommunications, signs, and then procedures and non-conforming uses are all in that Chapter 134. Everything else is being proposed to be moved into a design chapter, which is Chapter 135. And so things that traditionally have been probably thought of as zoning have been moved into a design chapter. This isn't new for Des Moines. We've had design regulations in Chapter 82, our site plan regulations for specific uses for specific zoning districts as well since at least 1998. So we have nearly, well, we have 21 years of experience in administering design regulations outside of the zoning ordinance in Des Moines. This is the draft zoning map that we have for the city. Again, this is much more detailed than our existing zoning code or zoning map allows. Under our existing zoning code, the really only difference between any kind of residential zoning in Des Moines is the lot width. That's all that defines the character of neighborhoods is lot width. This code starts to look at architectural styles and breaks in those styles as you go through individual neighborhoods. So on this map, there are neighborhoods that have traditionally been zoned, all one district, including parks and.
was the social equity chapter, which was a very important chapter in our comprehensive plan that was a result of the substantial outreach that we did as part of that planning effort. Several directions came from that plan: directed growth redevelopment, mix of uses and housing types, nodes and corridors designated on the map that are all linked by transit, so our land use map is linked to our transit, urban solutions to urban issues, and return on investment on public infrastructure. This is where we are today. Obviously, Plan DSM is at the top of this chart. That was the citizens' plan for the, for the future of Des Moines. The council's guide DSM document is a strategic plan that actually provided funding for other planning initiatives at the city, including the zoning ordinance. You'll also see on there Move DSM, which is our transportation plan, Live DSM, which is the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We have our CIP and programming that's also within that, and then our nodes and corridors and neighborhood plans. So our revitalization strategy would be that middle box. So as you can see, they're all, they've all been funded, and they're all plans that are under the umbrella of Plan DSM. They've been developed with, according to the principles of Plan DSM. As I said, the last comprehensive rewrite was 1965. 1926 was actually our first zoning ordinance adopted in the city, and there's a copy of it. There was a delay in adoption of their effect of the 1926 ordinance because the state had to adopt enabling legislation to allow cities to have zoning period. So, Des Moines was ahead of the curve in that, in that time, but this is the third comprehensive rewrite in almost 100 years for the city. So why a new code? Since 1965, we amended the current code about over 300 times. It's not very user-friendly. There's conflicts in the document, very minimal design regulations. Certain uses that are necessary for sustainable neighborhoods are not included in this, in this ordinance today. The allowed density intensity isn't in alignment with our comprehensive plan, and many properties are not appreciating in value in Des Moines. So, as part of this zoning ordinance project, we started out with a series of about 11 stakeholder meetings. Our consultant did. I listed who participated in those stakeholder meetings. There was a project direction report that was prepared in October of 2016 that provided direction to where we are tonight. These were just the items that were, were directed in that, and so the ordinance in front of you tonight is, is, is the result. There are two ordinances under consideration and a zoning map that constitute essentially our development codes or development regulations. Chapter 134 is zoning, and you'll see the items that are now proposed to be included in our zoning ordinance. Obviously, zoning districts, authorization for our zoning map. Uses of property are listed in the, in the zoning chapter. Wireless telecommunications, signs, and then procedures and non-conforming uses are all in that Chapter 134. Everything else is being proposed to be moved into a design chapter, which is Chapter 135, and so things that traditionally have been probably thought of as zoning have been moved into a design chapter. This isn't new for Des Moines. We've had design regulations in Chapter 82, our site plan regulations for specific uses for specific zoning districts as well since at least 1998. So we have nearly, well, we have 21 years of experience in administering design regulations outside of the zoning ordinance in Des Moines. This is the draft zoning map that we have for the city. Again, this is much more detailed than our existing zoning code or zoning map allows. Under our existing zoning code, the really only difference between any kind of residential zoning in Des Moines is the lot width. That's all that defines the character of neighborhoods is lot width. This code starts to look at architectural styles and breaks in those styles as you go through individual neighborhoods. So, on this map, there are neighborhoods that have traditionally been zoned, all one district, including parks and, and community facilities and everything else, schools, under one zoning district for large expanses. Under this map, it's a much more refined delineation of where breaks occur in architecture and eras of homes, years homes were built, things like that. Again, the easiest way to use this code is by following the 10-step guide. I'm not gonna run everybody through that. I hope people have seen this on our website and have used that as an opportunity to review the code and become familiar with it. We still have a zoning map, as I said. We have an app on the Plan DSM website that lets you search by address, and you can toggle back and forth between current zoning map and proposed zoning map, so you can see the differences in what your designation will be, and then you can find what those regulations are in the code. We have a series of zoning districts, just like we have in our current code, but there is a strong emphasis in this code on mixed-use zoning that is very different from our existing, existing ordinance. Our existing code is very hierarchical or parammetrical as you, as you come down that. You'll see that we have, you know, basically residential's allowed everywhere but industrial districts, but there's very little commercial, small commercial that, that goes into residential neighborhoods, and it pretty much treats a lot of the commercial districts all the same. And what we're trying to do is have districts that really promote public transit usage and public transit amenities that we have in the community by encouraging density on corridors that are served by that public transit. Again, this is a listing of just at the top in the yellow, the residential districts are in this code, a much greater, I guess differentiation in those districts than just lot width. And then we also have new things in this code, such as a parks and, P1 district, which is for parks and open space, and a P2 district that would be like for schools and institutional uses. Those have traditionally just been zoned, whatever the residential around them is zoned, and so that's limited some of those uses on signage and, and other things that have routinely had to go to the zoning board of adjustment. Once you know what zoning you're in, you go to our use charts. Right now, in our code, everything's just listed out narratively in the code. It's very hard to, to compare districts. The new tables make it very easy to compare, compare differences among districts, and if your zoning doesn't allow the use that you want or have, you can quickly find out what zoning you need by using these tables. Once you know that your use is permitted, there are certain building types that are allowed in each zoning district, and so there is a building types table in the code that specifies in Chapter 135, because now we're getting into design, what type, building types uses need to be in, in certain districts. There are frontage requirements where we have requirements for occupied space, such as retail or office or, or other uses. Those are delineated on the lines or the primary streets map. That map includes an inset of downtown, for example. We do not expect every ground floor to be occupied with retail along these corridors. We know there's not a market for that much retail. We have opened up this zoning district to allow other uses to be on that, but we do want an active streetscape along those corridors for certain. Building types all have a four-page spread in the, in Chapter 135. Beginning is photo examples. Most of those are from Des Moines. There are some that are not Des Moines in, in the code. And then you get into the tables that actually talk about building placement, height, relation to lot lines, even some use regulations are in those tables. This is where you will find, as I'll get to in a few minutes, the regulations about minimum house size, basements, garages for the house types A, B, C, and D that are in this code. Again, building types, design requirements. After you know what building type you're in and that you're complying with setbacks, there are design requirements for architecture on the buildings in this code, which are an enhancement from our existing regulations. And, again, I think we've done quite a bit of review on this between when the public review draft was released in August of 2017. We received 300, over 300 public comments and over 350 staff comments. We then also conducted some stress tests, if you want to call it that, of the standards against existing projects, and we made revisions to the design requirements to address some of those issues. The parking regulations in this, in the Chapter 135 are, again, overall about a 30% reduction in required parking from what our current code requires. This is not a no-parking-required ordinance. I know there's been some discussion and desire to have that, but this is not. We obviously know that we have impacts on neighborhoods of commercial, near our neighborhoods, and we, I get calls about it, and so while long-term, whether it's car sharing or, or Uber or whatever platform is, is, is next, driverless cars, whatever, we still have to accommodate passenger vehicles in Des Moines, and if that time comes and later, this ordinance could be amended again, just like any other section. Landscape standards are an enhancement in this zoning ordinance. We've only had landscape standards in Des Moines since 2004, I believe, and so these are an enhancement of our landscape standards. There's more interior parking, more over-story trees required by that, that is, to achieve a lot of our sustainability goals in the comp plan about stormwater runoff, trying to contain water on sites, and we know that the more green area that we can have on a site, the more that water infiltrates at the point it falls, rather than running off on, onto our sewer system and into the river. Sign code is, sign regulations are in the zoning chapter. This is probably our most confusing section of our ordinance today. It's, it's not user-friendly at all, and so, again, we've, we've put the information in tables, and I think we've created a much more user-friendly sign regulation for, for the city of Des Moines, much easier to navigate and find. Review and approval procedures. Both chapters have review and approval procedures. In Chapter 135, there's two processes available. One is administrative site plan review, so this whole project was based on the idea of trying to get more things into administrative reviews. In exchange for having more things eligible for administrative review, we had to set higher standards for development. That was the trade-off that we made between development desires and neighborhood desires in Des Moines. The neighborhoods gave up a lot of opportunity, or are giving up opportunity for public hearings on product, on every project in exchange for a setting of minimum standard for development. If a project does not meet those standards, they can apply for a Type 1 administrative design exception or a design alternative under the code. If it's not eligible for that level of relief, there is a public hearing site plan process that they can go through. Combined, these processes are still, in my opinion, more efficient than our existing code. One, plan unit development has to go through planning commission and council. Under this scenario, the, the equivalent of a PUD would just be going to the planning commission. The only need to go to the council for, beyond, beyond planning commission on a Type 2 review is if they disagree with your decision. So, we believe that the process is more efficient, and as long as they meet the standards or within the level of relief that we can grant administratively, we can approve projects administratively and not, not have to have a public hearing. So, we do believe we've, we've made the processes more efficient and more predictable for all parties. Chapter 134 also has review and approval procedures, so you still have rezoning as an option under Chapter 134. You can still get variances to sign regulations under the zoning ordinance. Those would still go to the board of adjustment, as well as wireless telecommunications and use variances. So, a lot of people have asked, and I've, I've got some documents to pass around at this point. This is the list of emails that we've received in entirety to Plan DSM since the public hearing draft was released. I believe about 630 of those are, it's a form letter from Realtors in Des Moines Metro and Iowa that, so I, I provided the original letter to you. All the other letters have the same information. The only thing it changes is the name of who submitted them. As of yesterday, about 17, 18% of 430 that we'd received were from Des Moines Realtors. The rest were Des Moines Metro Realtors, and we did have some that were as far as way as Mason City, Pleasantville, et cetera, they're in that stack. But, again, the letter is the same, but there's obviously 630 of them in there. So, one of the things that was listed in the Realtors comments and that we've heard quite loud is about the impacts on affordable housing, so I just wanted to touch briefly on some key points, I think, point out what this code is doing to address affordable housing. One, it's eliminating duplicate processes. Time is money. The longer you're in a process, it's costly, and so we believe that we're helping all development and in turn affordable housing development by having shorter processes and more predictable processes. This implements our land use and transportation goals, which by increasing density along transit corridors, you can also address household costs for transportation, which are also a major part of, of addressing affordability in the community. The design standards ensure predictability and quality for developers and neighborhoods. If a project is following design standards, there's no need for a public hearing. That eliminates some discussion, not in my backyard, because it's meeting a minimum design standard. Multi-household residential is, is now proposed to be administrative review under this code. Right now, all multifamily residential has to have a planning commission hearing, and so we're, we're taking that back into an administrative review. Again, assuming it complies with the design regulations, otherwise it could go to the planning commission. This code reintroduces missing middle housing. Since 1995, our zoning ordinance has taken duplex structures out of most residential districts, and so this is reintroducing the ability to put duplexes and fourplexes back into some districts. We would hope that over time, as we prove up, the design standards prove up and the, the zoning proves up, that we could expand that to additional districts and maybe expand that citywide at some day. The accessory household units are allowed in this code in certain districts, again, so this would be a unit that might be in a detached structure in a rear yard or above a garage in a rear yard, or could even be in the principal structure. But again, we believe that this is probably one of the more efficient ways to utilize existing infrastructure, create compact development, and be able to produce affordable units on properties that could be income sources for households as well. And then also, we coordinate this zoning code with our revitalization strategies that are happening in the neighborhoods, so the, the different planning efforts that are going on are, are linked and are all consistent with Plan DSM. There's been a question about why we have regulations for one and two household dwelling units in this code for square footage and amenities like basements or garages. This was just a summary. The average square footage of all homes in Des Moines is 1,253 square feet. That's 27% smaller than the averages for the remainder of Polk County. The average sale price of all housing in Des Moines is $133,000. As of today, I'd looked at some realty sites, and just for example, just immediately south of downtown, there were 90-some homes that are for sale under $175,000 in Des Moines. Shifting over to another area of the map, there were another 50-some homes that were available. You go to Johnson, there's two. You go to Urbandale, there's fewer. You go to other suburbs, there's fewer. So we believe that we do have significant affordable housing stock in Des Moines. Part of the challenge is, is that that, that housing stock is occupied, and when those households want to move up from the housing that they're in, right now, there isn't a whole lot of housing stock being built that's, that's larger than those averages that we have today. And so the choices for people that are looking for either to upsize or to downsize has historically been to leave Des Moines and go, go to the suburbs and seek those housing options. Just for example, last night, I was driving on Grand Avenue of West Des Moines, and I was by the Raccoon Valley Park in, in West Des Moines, and just within a stretch from the entrance to that park to the first stoplight north, I saw large homes, small homes, buy-attached townhomes, all there. That product type is somewhat limited in Des Moines, and so this code would try and encourage introduction of that housing in Des Moines as well, in a greater, greater number. Again, 133,000 is the average sale price in Des Moines, 229,000 for the rest of Polk County. Minimum square footages. So, in our code, we are proposing that one and two household uses have minimum square footage required for a one-story house that's 1,400 square feet. Two-story is 1,600, or I'm sorry, one and a half story is 1,600 square feet, and two-story is 1,800 square feet. Those are at or less than the average for the metro, excluding Des Moines, for, for square footages. So they're, they're at or, or less than average housing for the metro. Now, that said, this code also has relief procedures in it that address those square footages. So, as staff, we are able to vary those square footages by 30% under this ordinance with a Type 1 design alternative. And what we've said is, infill development or development that is already served by all necessary public infrastructure, we would have greater latitude on that square footage relief. In greenfield development, we would be asking developers to, at a minimum, be showing that there's a mix of housing sizes and housing types in those developments in exchange for relief to square footages. So, they may have some that are less, they may have some that are more, they may also have varied housing product types. What we're trying to avoid is getting a single, large development of all one square footage of homes in it, because we know that that's not going to be sustainable long-term as far as the ability to stay in your neighborhood, upsize, downsize over time, et cetera. The, if greater than 30% relief is requested to those square footages, it requires a plan and zoning commission review. So, there are minimums, but there's relief procedures available, and the P and Z's relief is ultimately unlimited in, in what you want to do with those square footages when they come forward. Basements, again, for one and two stor, one and two household units. Full basement is proposed in this. We can reduce or waive, staff can reduce or waive that if there's a water table issue or if they're, if they can't provide sewer and an elevation equivalent to the basement floor elevation. If for any other reason, planning commission can waive that under this code. We think it provides economical space for growth within that home. Right now, foundations are going down 42 inches to frost-depth footing, the additional four feet down to provide a full-depth basement. The slab, on a slab construction, becomes the basement floor, and you're talking about floor joists to span the, the foundation walls. So, incremental cost, yes, but we think it's an economical expansion, I guess, much more efficient than adding an addition to the house at a later time with foundation and additional square footage. So, we think that this gives opportunity for people to grow in place within the existing home, and then also it provides storm shelter. Code does require garages for one and two household units. That requirement can be waived by the plan and zoning commission. It cannot be waived by staff. The size that we came up with was based on kind of post-World War II construction sizes with some additional area for storage. We do know from our analysis of property values, properties that, that don't have a garage are not appreciating at the same, same rate as, as homes that do have garages in our neighborhoods. And so, on top of that, we also have issues with inadequate storage on properties that's resulting in substantial public monies being spent on property cleanups, and it's, it's detracting from the appearance of neighborhoods when things, items are left outside because there's not adequate storage on a property. And we do know that few are being, if they're not built with the original structure, few, few are being built later under construction. Public participation. As I said, just referencing the state or the analysis and direction report, we have a steering committee. They've had 17 meetings, stakeholder interviews, there were 11, as I said, did the project direction report. I said, did the project direction report, had the public review draft released two years ago, again, we had all those comments that came in, we went through each and every comment. Some were opposed, I mean diametrically opposed, and so we had to make trade-offs and balances in what we presented to you for a zoning code. There are, nobody got everything that they wanted in this code. But I think we've been fair in how we've proposed, I think, amendments and revisions to this ordinance. The public hearing draft was released in May of this year. We had 22 additional stakeholder meetings since that was released in May. Those are individual stakeholders or group stakeholders. Planning Commission had two workshops, and you're having two hearings, or two nights of hearings. Council's had about five workshops, and will have three readings of an ordinance, including a public hearing as well. So, I don't, I believe there's been significant public participation in this project, and stakeholders have been at the table from the very beginning on this project. That was required as part of the process, and I think it's been, the result is the document you have in front of you. Council, just refresher of who's been on council in the last five years while we've been working on this project from the Comp Plan on the screen. Steering Committee, same thing, same steering committee that has been on for the last five years, there were a few changes with changes in council members, and a few members are no longer on the committee, but as you can see, we had a very broad-ranging steering committee, and it's the same steering committee as we had for Plan DSM. So, there's a lot of consistency and a lot of understanding about what the Comp Plan is proposing and what this code is proposing. So in conclusion, the first comprehensive development code in 54 years. The development codes propose urban solutions to sustainability for Des Moines. Our planning efforts are supportive and are coordinated amongst the city departments. The development review processes in this code are efficient. Relief mechanisms are provided in the ordinance to address design standards. It had substantial public participation, and the development codes do promote social equity, in our opinion. So, we have more information, again, tonight is just the first of two nights of public hearings on this item. All of this information is available on the Plan DSM website, and comments can continue to be submitted to that website. That's how we're able to document every email that's come in to us. So we encourage people to submit any additional comments to Plan DSM. I'm available if you have any questions. Thanks.
Questions at this point? All right, so we will begin the public hearing on this item. All of those who wish to speak, if you could maybe make your way towards our podium, and then, we need, if everyone could sign our sheet. Could you hold it up? Where is the sheet for people to sign at? It's back there? Okay, thank you. And as you come towards the podium, if you could state your name and address for record.
What's the minimum?
Five minutes per person.
We're going in order of the sheet?
I don't see it, so I'm not sure who's making any order you'd like.
Just make sure you start by saying your name and address, and then you go up there.
Madam Chair, Council, Commission Members, excuse me. My name is Dan Knopf. I'm here on behalf of the Home Builders Association, which has been in the greater Des Moines community for 75 years. I've been in construction in and around Des Moines since 1994, and I'm here because we-
Please, sir.
6751 Corporate Drive, Johnston, Iowa is our corporate headquarters. Sorry. We feel that there are several places where this code definitely overreaches, things that the city ordinance is to promote the health, the safety and welfare of its citizens, and trying to mandate sizes of houses to raise property values, we don't see where that's in the citizens' best interests or their welfare, health, and safety. We've had a national review by this, I'm here to introduce, we've got speakers here from our National Association. This is a very regressive code in many ways, there's a lot of good here, but I think we're kind of going through this pretty quickly. Mike mentioned the amount of public input, there have been a lot of public meetings, but a lot of the input that was given by the industry and by the public isn't in the code. The changes aren't there, we've been told that this is the process to help get those there. We had someone review the code at our National Association that made this comment, and I'm reading it, to get it right. In 30 years of reviewing codes like this across the country, never seen anything as prescriptive and potentially exclusionary as requirements in Article 4. These are the types of things that we're here, we just want to make sure that this is right. 1965, it's been a long time, we're here to assume that this code is going to be here for a long time going forward. We want to make sure it's right, we want to make sure that the citizens' voices are heard. We think one of the things that is in this code, or one of the things that happens as a by-factor, is that the citizens in the neighborhood communities don't get the same voice that they had. We think that they're losing that voice, the way that this code is written. We think there's, there have been a lot of community outreach meetings, but we think there are a lot of citizens that don't know that if there's a more than 50% catastrophic event that occurs to their house, that they can't rebuild it the way that it was initially built without getting permission, specific permission. That seems unfair. So, those are the things that we really want to talk about, we want to make sure that they're in there. We're definitely focused on solutions, and the reason we're here today, or I'm here today is specifically to ask this commission to allow us to do that. We presented those to city staff, they mentioned that they would be submitted, but we're not sure in what capacity and how that works. So we'd really like to work with them and come up with those solutions, so that way that when the code comes, it's something that we all can put our arms around. They've talked a lot about, let's get it in, and then let's fix the problems when we find them. Well, if we found problems, we've already noted them, let's work on them now before it gets sent to the council, that's what we're here to ask. I'm not going to get into all the specifics of those, but if you'd like, I certainly will. There's a long list of people that want, a long line of people that want to speak with you, so, thank you.
And you mentioned you submitted those in writing.
We have, we have talked with the staff about them, we have not submitted them in writing, that's our next step, that's what we're working on now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lance Henning serves as President and Executive Director of Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity. We office at 2200 East Euclid on there. Habitat is here because we do care about Des Moines, and we care about its neighborhoods. Habitat cares about the hard-working Des Moines residents, and those that want to participate in the American dream and own a home of their own. Some of Des Moines' hard-working residents we've partnered with include CNAs, Certified Nursing Assistants, that help take care of maybe some of your friends and family that have unfortunately had to go to the hospital, concrete flat worker that maybe paved the roads, that helped folks get to the meeting this evening, call center specialist that provides great customer service for one of our fantastic businesses in Des Moines, and administrative assistant that works for the Community Development Department. Habitat cares about the cost of home. Habitat is here this evening to provide a voice for the thousands of Des Moines residents that today want a safe, decent place to call their home. And we are here for the thousands of future Des Moines residents that want to be a part of all the positives that are happening here in this city as this workforce continues to grow significantly. Habitat is here because this zoning code, as proposed, will negatively, in fact, impact Des Moines residents' ability to purchase a new home, and negatively impact the cost of home. Zoning, city regulations, and city processes are significant costs to creating housing, and this zoning adds significantly to housing costs and adds to the process. It does not make it most efficient in all aspects. Quality housing should not be defined by larger square footage and mandatory basements and required garages. In areas we are most active, new Habitat homes regularly are valued twice the average sale price of the area. Habitat developments, such as the Birdland area, thanks to your guys' approval and a great partnership with the city, the assessed valuation per acre is 50% greater than some of the developments with larger homes valued at $300,000. The Habitat homes without basements, without garages, and not meeting the square footage requirement are 50% higher in valuation per acre than some areas with 2,000-square-foot homes, three-car garages, and basements. Both smaller homes and larger homes can be quality homes, and the city of Des Moines needs both. It needs more of all types of housing. It needs a code with certainty that encourages a variety of housing mixes. The proposed code does not do that. Let's not allow the city's housing affordability strategy and its way to create variety of housing be based on granting discretionary exemption. Let's write it into code, ways to incent, create variety of housing sizes in more areas of the community. Managing by a Type 1 exemption creates a huge black hole of uncertainty. Type 1 exemption is not a policy that benefits the cost of home or creates certainty on what is required. Over the past five years, Habitat for Humanity's created 135 homeownership opportunities, 114 of those were new construction. 36% of those came in front of Planning and Zoning or the Board of Adjustment. That means 64% were on lots of record, they are situations where we pulled the permit and we built the house. Under the new zoning, none of those 114 houses built in the past five years would meet the proposed zoning. None of those 114 houses would have met the Type 1 exemption. It means that if we wanted to get an exemption from building a large house, $300,000 house, all 114 building permits would have to come in front of planning staff and planning and zoning for a public hearing for a Type 2 exemption. If we needed to ask for an exemption for every single building permit, Habitat would have to hire another staff person to be regularly requesting the exemptions for the so-called "fast pass" under the zoning. If we don't ask for the exemptions, zoning will raise Habitat house costs 45% to 55% depending on our house plan. That means with no exemptions, the code would add $75,000 to $90,000 per house that Habitat for Humanity's building. We believe there should not be a bulk ordinance across the entire city. Allow variable sizes and housing variety across more parts of the city. We request no garage requirement, we request no basement requirement, and we request reducing the square footage requirement by at least 35%. Let's unlock affordability. Let's increase the certainty. Let's write a code that's smart for our community, has more variety, and is smart for the cost of home. 75% of Des Moines' households should not be priced out of the choice to buy a new home. 75% of Des Moines' households shouldn't need a discretionary exemption to buy a new home. Let's make housing affordability part of the code. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dave Stone, and I am commenting on behalf of United Way of Central Iowa. I am also a Des Moines resident at 1223 39th Street. United Way of Central Iowa fights for the health, education, and financial stability of all Central Iowans. For over 100 years, United Way has brought together many diverse public-private partners to identify and tackle some of Central Iowa's toughest challenges. Focusing on issues such as early childhood reading, poverty, mental and social health, high school graduation, and career training, United Way of Central Iowa inspires Central Iowans to join the fight to improve lives. In 2018, United Ways of Iowa released the Asset Limited Income Constrained and Employed Report. The ALIS report found that 33% of all Central Iowans are unable to meet a basic needs budget, meaning they cannot meet their current household expenses and cannot save. The recent workforce housing study commissioned by Capital Crossroads and conducted by Virginia Tech found that over 58,000 households are currently cost-burdened in our community, meaning they are already struggling to meet mortgages and rents and have no ability to save. Asset billing is one of the key strategies to alleviate poverty in our community. The inability of families to save or afford current rents or mortgages hampers efforts to help families thrive in this city. To address this issue and to meet the expected population growth in Polk County, we will need an additional 57,170 units by 2038. Of these new units, more than half will need to be less than $175,000. This is because expected growth, over 62% of expected growth, will be among families who make less than $50,000 per year in household income. 62% will make less than $50,000. Regarding these proposed zoning code changes, we appreciate the focus on encouraging mixed-use neighborhoods, on increasing development of both single and multifamily units along the area of the city's transportation nodes. Many of the families that we serve have significant transportation barriers. This new approach will help families maintain and secure quality employment, utilize necessary public services because of the public transportation options that are more accessible to them. We at United Way, however, do have serious concerns about the specific restrictions on building designs for both single and multifamily homes. These restrictions will place unnecessary barriers in front of those who need affordable housing options, and will make homeownership an unrealistic path out of poverty for many in our community. It is also a disincentive for developers and home builders to build affordable housing inventory that is desperately needed to meet current demands and future demands in our community. If we value the health, safety, and welfare of our residents, then we need to consider ways to create a more equitable system. We look forward to continuing this conversation with the Plan and Zoning Commission, as well as other stakeholders, as this proposed change goes forward, and I'd be happy to share my comments with the committee in written form. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Good evening, my name is Michael Wilson, and I'm President and CEO of the Federal Home Loan Bank of Des Moines, we're located at 909 Locust Street in downtown. We employ about 330 people here in Des Moines, and I'm also a board member of Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a few brief comments on the proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. I recognize the challenges Des Moines faces and the efforts of city staff to amend the zoning provisions and satisfy various constituents. There are positive changes proposed, such as expanding approval or expediting approval of multifamily rental housing along certain public transportation corridors, and I applaud the city staff for those improvements. On the other hand, proposals to increase minimum square footage requirements and require garages and full basements will have a chilling effect on the construction of affordable workforce housing in Des Moines. This is especially worrisome in light of a recently concluded Capital Crossroads housing study that estimates, as you've just heard, that Central Iowa will need an excess of 50,000 affordable housing units to meet unmet housing needs over the next couple of decades. Housing affordability is already constrained in Des Moines, with many families paying an excess of 50% of their income for housing, and having to avail themselves of local food pantries for sustenance. The proposed changes to the zoning ordinances will make a bad situation even worse. My suggestion is to ask for a thorough impact study of the proposed zoning law changes on housing affordability, taking into consideration a Capital Crossroads study. In addition, I recommend that written exceptions to the zoning provisions be included in the code for affordable housing. Developers need certainty to make business decisions. I recognize that people have been working for a long time on these changes, but it is important that the changes that are made are the right ones for all members of the community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, my name is Carl Eckhart, I'm with the National Association of Home Builders. Address is 1201 15th Street Northwest, Washington DC. Now, don't hold the DC against me, I'm from Mason City, Iowa, so I am a little bit of a native. I'm here with the National Association of Home Builders, and we have, our membership is the home builder that you may think of, but also the carpenter and the electrician, the banker, the florist, everything that goes into a home, there's 28 trades that go into building a home. But I'm also here because I'm embarrassed. I'm from Mason City, Iowa, and I want to tell you a little story. This issue first came to me last year, when I got a call from a home builder in Springdale, Arkansas, and he said, hey, my town is trying to ban vinyl siding. I said, why are they trying to ban vinyl siding? He said, well, they want to keep those people from buying houses. He said, "Well, they want to keep those people from buying houses." Was that me? You know, poor people. Oh. Then I worked on it in Georgia. Then I've worked on it in Oklahoma. And now they call and say, "Hey, Des Moines, Iowa is trying to ban vinyl siding and make basements required and attach garages required," and all things that make houses more expensive. And I'm not saying you're trying to ban homes for those people or for poor people or for any people, but you're going to. And I applaud that, for the first time in 50-some years, you're redoing the comprehensive plan, but even though that'll take you into high into this century, your ideas are going to put Des Moines back about two centuries when it comes to who can win and who can have a chance at the American dream. So, this is, it's important enough, I guess, where I came all the way out to participate in this and work with our membership. And I was told by one of our builders, he submitted 34 pages of comments on the original proposal. Thirty-four pages. Two items were taken into the edits. He had to have more than two good ideas out of 34 pages. Now, I'm sure all of you live in brick homes with attached garages, and they're 1,800 square feet in size, so you don't have to worry about it. But there's a lot of people out here, a lot of people in your town, that don't, and they can't afford it. And not to get into a math debate, but the average price per square foot of an existing home, if I was going to go buy one in Des Moines, is $175 per square foot. So, that's a 760-square-foot home if I'm going to pay $133,000. Now, you can go back and forth and all, what is affordable, what's not affordable, but what you're doing will add cost to the price of a home. That's a fact. You cannot disagree with that. If you add $1,000 to the cost of a new home, 130,000 Americans decide not to buy a new home. 2,000 Iowans will decide not to buy or build a new home. If you build a new home, you create one permanent new job in your community, and while you're building it, you're employing people in all 28 of those trades. If you take away 100 Habitat Homes and 60 affordable housing homes and all the other potential new homes, that's a lot of jobs that are going to leave. And, to be honest, I don't think companies want to come into a town that doesn't provide housing affordability. That's going to be something you're going to have to try and sell and say, "Well, we'd love to have you here, but houses cost $300,000, so..." Well, what are you going to do? Subsidize every new company? I mean, you've got to think about the future, think your next 50 years, because what you lay down here will not be edited for 50 years based on the past track record. So, we just encourage you to think about the consumers, think about the taxpayers, think about the businesses, think about the actual, those who will be damaged by these ideas. And I applaud you for doing this. I applaud you for having the public hearings. It's not easy to hear all this. Your ideas are good. Just need to fine-tune it a bit and make sure you keep everybody involved in the ability to own a home. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alex Fernandez, and I'm with the Vinyl Siding Institute in Washington, DC. Our address is 1201 15th Street Northwest, Washington, DC 2005. And I won't hold it against you if you hold that against me. I've worked with Carl on this issue a lot across the United States, Georgia, Oklahoma, Florida. And in hearing the proponents' description of what they encompass as the idea of zoning, it seems to me it's been stretched beyond reason. I stood there thinking, "What's not included? What's not included in this definition of zoning?" And that ties into this phrase that I use when I describe, when I sit down with legislators or lobbyists or anyone working on this kind of issue. I either own the home or I don't own the home. I don't own the home together with the city. I don't own it with the town, with the county. I pay the bills. I fix it when it's broken. If the house falls into disrepair and I can't pay the bills, they come and take my house. The county doesn't step in, the city doesn't step in to help me cover those costs or help me fix the house. And, I mean, I just find it difficult to conceptualize how we've gotten here. The American dream is to own a home, and this kind of regulation, this kind of ordinance, it's going to make it impossible for people to purchase homes. Vinyl siding is a safe and durable product. It's instrumental to the Iowan economy, and it's vital to the growing housing needs of the state of Iowa. Economically, it represents over $50 million from stem to stern in this state. That's not just people that work in the industry. That's people that purchase the product. That's resin manufacturers. That's stem to stern. That's a huge economic impact in the state, across the entire state. One of the things that I was told leading up to today's hearing was that one of the concerns was the environmental impact of vinyl siding. There's this misconception that because it's a plastic, it's a polyurethane, that it's bad for the environment, and that's just a misconception. According to a study in 2016 by the Sustainability Solutions Corporation, vinyl siding was the second most environmentally friendly cladding material on the market. That study took into consideration a number of factors, but some of the most important factors were global warming, fossil fuel depletion, smog, acidification, ozone depletion, respiratory effects, and cumulative energy demand. Vinyl siding came in only behind cedar siding, and it came in ahead of stucco, eaves, fiber cement, brick, masonry. I mean, if we're going to be objective about it, we have to be objective about it. By allowing jurisdictions to select winners and losers, the county is imposing, the city is imposing arbitrary restrictions, and those arbitrary restrictions are capricious in nature, and they are affecting people across the economic spectrum. We would respectfully request that the city, that the board, consider any amendments proposed by the home builders, and that if they're not willing to dispose of the matter by rejecting the ordinance as it's proposed, they would hopefully consider the amendments. And I appreciate your time this evening.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I'm here on behalf of Hubbell Realty Company. We are at 6900 West Town Parkway in west Des Moines, but we own several properties around the Des Moines area, and I am also a Des Moines resident. We understand and fully support the need to change this code. We appreciate the amount of time and effort the city staff has put into this draft. However, additional input is necessary and additional changes are required, and that is why our primary ask is to have more time. More time to make changes and encourage affordable housing, more time to promote business, to boost economic development, and generate greater tax revenue for the city. There is a reason the code has not been changed for 50 years. It is not an easy process. Prematurely implementing a code that has not been properly reviewed and tested could have a drastic and negative consequence on the city. It is the responsibility of the city and the developers, engineers, architects, and builders to promote our city, generate interest, and create excitement to live, work, and play here. So, I am asking for more time to help out with the city code and create a better public-private partnership in getting this code drafted. If we do not have more time and we're going to slam this through, I have five things that we have to have changed from a developer, builder, and then a generator of properties in the city of Des Moines. First, planned unit development needs to be back in this code. It is a mechanism in a form-based code to create unique and diverse projects and buildings. The city of Des Moines has many unique and diverse buildings, and that's what the PUD process will continue to allow. The second item is to modify the square foot minimum for houses. The square foot minimum for residential homes needs to be treated differently between greenfield lots and infill lots. The greenfield lots, we would like to see 1,200 square feet minimum for ranch style and 1,400 square feet minimum for two stories. The infill lots, we would like to see the neighborhood dictate what those lots are. If we have a neighborhood full of bungalows that are 700 square feet, the property, the infill property should match that. Number three, modify the garage and basement requirements for homes. Modify it to a garage or basement requirement in the greenfield lots. The infill lots, we should take out this requirement. It should match the neighborhood that it's going into. The fourth item is the restrictions on external materials. The zoning code substantially restricts the external materials that can be used on commercial buildings and on houses. We understand the city wants to increase the standards for the city compliance. It will be vital to ensure that the materials included and eliminated in this draft meet this intent while clearly understanding the cost-benefit relationship from the user's perspective. The fifth item is very technical. The type-two design alternatives are too restrictive and cause a situation where the public approval process may not be available to every owner. The purpose of the type-one and type-two design alternatives is to speed up the process by allowing people to get through the type-one process. Every owner should still have access to that type-two approval process. Overall, our ask is not unreasonable, and with more time, the development community, builders, architects, and engineers can help make this zoning code successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening, and thanks for taking my comments. My name is Barb Klubel, and I live at 4003 Lincoln Place Drive in Des Moines. And I am a member of AMIS, which is a nonprofit organization that consists of many institutions, most of which are churches, but we also have community groups and nonprofits. And there are about 35 institutions in the metropolitan area of Des Moines. And about a year ago, we conducted, in Des Moines, we conducted what we call "house meetings," which are small group meetings, six to 10 people, with members of our various institutions to kind of take a pulse of what's on people's minds, what keeps them up at night, what issues are they facing that are troubling. And one that bubbled to the top was affordable housing, both purchase and rentals. So, as a result, we formed a research group a few months back. I'm part of that group, a research group on affordable housing. And so, my question had to do with how does the new code address affordable housing? And I know there was a slide called "How the Code Supports Affordable Housing." I was in the back. I couldn't really see it, and I could not hear all of Mike's comments, so I will look at that. I just want to be sure that it is available online. Is that true, on Plan DSM?
It will be.
It will be. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klubel.
Good evening. I appreciate being able to make comments to the commission. My name is Carolyn Yuland-Hake Walker. I live, excuse me, I'm sorry. I live at 4111 Ingersoll Avenue, and I'm also a member of the Des Moines Citizens Task Force on Sustainability. I am here tonight to ask the question, "Is this zoning code written with a vision for the future? The previous one lasted for over 50 years. Here in Des Moines, all over Iowa, all over the United States, and all over our planet, we see continual worsening of heat, drought, extreme storms, and et cetera. I think it's really important to be visionary as a commission and looking at the code in the sense of, and you are, in the sense of looking at mixed-use neighborhoods and bikeability and walkability. You're looking at affordable housing, and really, when you get down to it, the smaller the homes, the less carbon footprint. Also, you're looking at, in the code, installation of solar. It's much easier. You're looking at electric vehicles and how to have charging stations all over Des Moines. I appreciate all that. But I would also like to bring up another issue. Several of us went to the meetings last year, and also, I went to the meeting a couple months ago on public hearing, and I brought up urban agriculture. With extreme weather predicted to get worse, and of course, sea rise, it's important to look at food security and safety. It is so important to allow urban agriculture to be permitted in the city limits. And here, I'm speaking of not only community gardens, because we have fantastic community gardens, I'm speaking about small farms between one acre, 10 acres, probably the most, 20 acres. That's pretty large. But anyway, urban farms in cities are springing up all over our country, in many cities. Having this in our zoning code would give us a blueprint for our economic future in local food production. More and more cities are putting the zoning code for urban agriculture in their zoning code as well as passing ordinances. Some of them are Detroit, Austin, Boston, Cleveland, Chicago, Seattle, Minneapolis, and others. I really think it's important at this time to have Des Moines also look at local food in our zoning code. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Good evening. I'm Lance Hanson. I'm the incoming president for the Des Moines Area Association of Realtors, and I wanted to take a moment just to go over a couple of things that I think maybe are being misunderstood at this point. One of those is the discussion of inventory and the availability that's out there. I want to put that in perspective for you. Across the whole metro, suburbs and all, the inventory that's available at $200,000 or less is less than two months' worth of inventory on our market right now. So, I want you to know, the numbers of houses that are available right now, that's what it's fueling, is less than two months of turnover of inventory. So, don't be fooled by how many houses are available at any certain area. The reality is that there is not even close to enough housing that's at that level. The other thing I want to talk about is that affordability is fueled by availability. The less you have, the higher the prices go, the less affordable that is. We need to have an awareness of that. It is going on now across the metro, across every area that we're in. One of the things that you should take note of is that there are multiple developments that are going on now outside of the Des Moines area that not one single house and those developments would pass this new code. Not one. They would all be disallowed based on the code that we're talking about with size requirements, the exterior requirements, the basement, the garage, those things. We are saying we want people to move to the other cities for affordability. I don't think that's the intent here. The other thing I did want to bring up is there was kind of a dismissal of the number of emails received by realtors or from realtors because they were all the same email. That email was developed specifically to be sent to you, and it was done so with a large group of agents who have concerns and who I stand here representing tonight. They know firsthand what affordability is about because every day, they are out on the streets looking for homes, looking for affordability for people who need to live in this community. It's important that you understand that. Listen, the choices right now that are being made in this proposal would eliminate a large number of homes, a large amount of affordability that can be available in this community and is not at this point. And I want to just add one little piece of information, is right now, we are talking about affordability at 3%, 3.5%, and 4% interest rates. Trust me, after being in this business for over 30 years, that is not sustainable. We will go to 4%, 4.5%, 5%, maybe even 6%. And affordability will drop like a rock. Make sure you factor in the future because we're talking about rates today, and they won't stay here. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Jerry Chevers. I live in the fourth ward in a 900-square-foot house for the last 25 years. I've built in 10 states, lived in five, and been building in Des Moines and selling building materials for the last 25. This zoning ordinance far exceeds zoning and essentially tries to supersede the building code. If you take the, and there's been several comments that the ordinance hasn't been reviewed in the last 65 years. Well, that's not entirely true. We're on the 2015 Building Code Edition. We're on the 2017 Electrical Code Edition. Both of those have been adopted by the city council. If you add up the entire alphabet soup of regulations, the UBC, the UPC, the UMC, the IEC, you've got 4,400 pages of regulations that have all been updated. IEC, you've got four thousand four hundred pages of regulations that have all been updated as late as 2015. Plenty of other people have addressed the square footage requirements, which I also oppose, so I'm not going to get into that. But as far as the, there's roughly five pages in this code that redefine what building materials are and how they are used. They're poorly defined, they're headed towards litigation should this move forward. Who can define what a standing seam roof is in one three-word phrase? So what I would like to see is the entire paragraph of allowed facade materials, unallowed facade materials, be stricken and restored back to the documents that do have Real Code Council, the UBC, International Residential Code, and so forth. The materials that are banned, you know, a good example is rib steel roof. It's an energy star roof, it's hail-resistant roof, it's a fire-resistant roof. That is on the list of products that is not allowed. However, you allow wood shakes, so with all the talk of green housing and green building, here you've got a dangerous product, that's a potential fire hazard, that's not sustainable, that you're allowing just because you like the look of it, but you're banning rib steel because, well, there's a few people that don't like the look of it. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Colerick.
My name is J.B. Conlon, address 3721 Southwest 61st Street in Des Moines. I've been in housing, when I got into housing, I had a thirty-two-inch waist and hair. So as you can tell, that was a very long time ago. I know a lot of realtors in Des Moines, and I have a lot of respect for what the city has done. This is a very hard thing that they're trying to do. It needs to be done, but the biggest problem that you've heard over and over again is affordability. So please keep that in mind as you're going through this process. I'd like to give you a couple of real-world examples that will negate some of the arguments that the city has made for these minimum square footages. So there's a house, this is a West Des Moines house, the address is 2301 Park Drive. The square footage of that house is six hundred and forty square foot. It's a split-level house, doesn't have a basement. I lived in that house for ten years. That house is assessed at two hundred and three thousand, perfectly good house. That is well under what these square footage requirements and above what the assessment requirements are. There's a house at 5009 Tonawanda Lane in West Des Moines. That house is twelve hundred square foot, it is a two-story. It has no attached garage. It has a detached garage that the homeowners were able to put on at a later time. So when they could afford it, they put it on. When they needed it, they put it on. That house has increased in assessment, in value, the last three assessment periods by twenty-four percent. And that house is assessed at around a hundred ninety thousand. So those are two real-world examples that you can see, and those are in West Des Moines, that fly in the face of the argument that we need garages and we need basements. Those things add tremendous cost. So if we're trying to keep costs down, you've got to let the developer and the buyer decide what they want. And I would ask that you be forward-thinking and think about these small houses. The way we solve affordable housing is by increasing density and decreasing the size of the house. And people are willing to live in these smaller houses, it's more sustainable, it's a different world that we're living in today, so I would encourage you to have no minimum square footage requirements, because I would guess that there is not one example that anyone could show me of any new house that's been built anywhere in the city of Des Moines that detracted from a neighboring house. You're not going to find that it exists. So again, I don't believe that argument. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Conlon.
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Commission. My name is Joshua V. Barr. I am the director of the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission, and I am just here today to report on a meeting that we had in this room on July 9th at 3:00 P.M. It was a meeting about, it was a dialogue, excuse me, on the proposed zoning code and questions on affordable housing. We had about forty persons in attendance. I saw some of those persons on TV, on YouTube, and actually spoke tonight. Some of them are also in attendance. That was comprised of city employees, that was comprised of Home Inc., that was also Habitat for Humanity, Greater Des Moines Partnership, the city manager was there, DMAC was also there. And it was just a discussion on questions of affordable housing. I was the facilitator of that dialogue, and we all sat in a circle right here in this room, pushing the tables to the back. I am going to submit this to be received and filed, these questions that were asked and answered during the course of the discussion. And I am not going to go through all those. I think you all have been bombarded enough, and I know you want to go home. I am just going to point out a few things that were mentioned during the discussion, then I will sit down. I think I got enough copies for everybody. If there's not, I still have one more right here. So the biggest thing was, there appeared to be some confusion amongst respective affordable housing builders, as well as other developers who were also in attendance, and affected the code on affordable housing. And then the question then turned into a question of housing affordability versus affordable housing, and how those are a number of different things that can be addressed. So I am just going to point out a few things. Once again, I'm not going to go through the entire question, but one of the very last things on the last page, the last full page, is question J. And the question was, why is the zoning code driving property valuation? I thought that was a very good question. And this is the answer from the city that came forth. It said, "Plan DSM is a comprehensive plan for the city. In direct tie, the code is to increase tax base and valuation of properties, tax base per acre, per development basis, falling behind in tax rate to the suburbs, reality check of if there is going to be enough of a tax base." But ultimately, you know, some of the things that were said was, it's going to take a number of ways to address the affordable housing issue in the city. And this was according to the city's perspective, community development perspective. This is just one way of addressing the issue. There are another myriad of ways to address it, including creating more inclusionary zoning, which is also in here, that was discussed in this discussion. The incentives we provide to have inclusionary zoning in a certain percentage of housing for affordable housing, the number of housing stock that is presently available. So it does, according to the discussion, there was a discussion on, does this take away affordable housing? One of the responses was that it does not, because there's still rental, but there's also available housing stock. But at the end of the day, there still seems to be, we didn't come to a solution at this discussion. We came just to kind of have people sit on a ground level, build a foundation of where the city's coming from and where respective affordable housing advocates are coming from. Pol County Housing Trust Fund was also present. So I will leave this with you. I will not take up the time to go through this, this is fairly long, but I do think it's worth the read to understand what are some of the questions that were asked from the community, submitted questions prior to, as well as some things were discussed in the midst of this. I would say that there are still some concerns from the community. We received calls today from our office. My role was not never to get involved in this. I've only met some of y'all on an individual basis, but never a whole board. But the community reached out to us, and they continue to call us. We send most of those things to community development. But our role is to make sure that all persons have the opportunity to move up the socioeconomic ladder, and I hope you make the choice that you need to make to ensure that happens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
I'll make this brief, because I'm sure you're anxious. My name is Carrie Ramsey. I'm at 7008 Madison Avenue in Urbendale. I represent a builder and a developer. I also represent forty-nine employees. I also represent six hundred and sixteen subcontractors and their employees. I'm asking you to think about the people of our community, who we're hiring, our electricians, our plumbers, our nurses, our teachers, those people that we're providing housing for. And we really appreciate the city's input, we appreciate your input, the councils. We're excited, this is a great opportunity to be a part of something so much bigger than this meeting tonight, and what this represents as we face the next fifty years in housing in this community. So thank you very much for being a part of this.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Colerick. For anyone else who wishes to speak tonight on item number six. Well, thank you all who came for this particular issue, and again, there will be no action by the commission this evening, but August 1st is an art...
We made a motion to continue August 1st.
Oh, okay.
So...
Thank you, Jack. All those in favor of continuing item number six to our August 1st commission meeting, please signify by raising your hand. All right, cut that down. So thank you, and again, thank you to everyone who came to speak on this item. I believe we'll take about a five-minute break to allow individuals to exit. And this one is...
I didn't think it would.
Sometimes you need to work lots of...
Good point.
All right, we will reconvene.
It's a dangerous moment.
Thank you, items number seven and nine, for being patient. Item number seven in our public hearing tonight is a request from Hubble Realty for a property located at 4500 Hubble Avenue. The question is the determination whether the PUD conceptual amendment is conformance with the Plan Des Moines, creating our tomorrow. And the amending Plan Des Moines to revise the existing future land use designation from business park to low-density residential, and C, to review and approve of approval of a seventh amendment to the Baker PUD conceptual plan to allow development of nineteen-point-nine-eight acres of agricultural land for a single-family residential subdivision at a density of four-point-two units per acre.
Chair, members of the commission, Jason Van Asen with the city's planning staff. Just to get everybody started, getting us familiar with the site. This is an aerial identifying the subject property on the kind of the north side of Hubble Avenue, northeast quadrant part of the city. You can see the hashed area is the entire boundary of the PUD. The applicant's property, the part of the amendment, really is focused on this undeveloped... The applicant's property, the part of the amendment, really is focused on this undeveloped part of the Baker PUD. The balance to the northeast is apartments and then some land that was, has been approved for attached, single-family housing or town home type development. The, as the chair noted in reading the description, this PUD was first approved in the late 90s. The original thought was a light industrial kind of business park development. It has been amended a few times, allowed the northern, or the, excuse me, the eastern half came through this process, was amended and allowed to do medium-density residential. So, that left the part that we're speaking to towards tonight as the business park remaining in place to allow that to be developed. So, the applicant has come forward with a proposal to amend on that to allow a single-family development. This was on your agenda previously and has continued so we could have some dialogue with the applicant. Just quickly, photograph Hubble Avenue, looking at down the property, middle of that, the subject area, and then looking east and north into that area that was developed, multifamily. Response cards were passed around. So, this is the proposed conceptual plan showing lot layout, kind of an internal loop configuration for the road with single access to Hubble Avenue, public streets, also a secondary means of egress to the apartment complex for fire access, emergency-type purposes. As I've mentioned, this is a single-family project. The proposal does include these character elevations. There isn't, there is some specific language to minimum sizes of the units, but there, beyond that, there isn't any architectural character standards that we've seen in some other PUDs that we often will visit with you about. As staff, we've, you know, our job is to look at the comprehensive plan and make a recommendation to you. This is a comprehensive plan amendment in order for this project to move forward. And so, not only do we, you know, look at the map, the land use map, but we also look at the goals of the comprehensive plan that are written throughout the report, throughout the document, and base our recommendations to you on those. In this case, this is a transit route, a high-traffic corridor. If we were going through a planning exercise with you that was independent of a proposal for this area, we'd be looking at medium-density, low-medium-density type housing or commercial uses and those types of things. So, this certainly is a request that, from our perspective, is not in keeping with the intent of the comprehensive plan to, as we've talked a lot tonight in other meetings, to put density, more intense uses on our transit corridors, promote walkability, transit usage, dense urban development. That's what we're trying to promote in Des Moines with the Plan DSM. So, with that, we are recommending denial of the request. We did meet with the applicant. We appreciate the time they spent with us to share ideas, but ultimately, we weren't able to come to any sort of agreement. There's some stuff in the staff report where we talk about, you know, the possibility of, you know, doing row homes on the, on the project, some sort of mix of middle housing, four-unit development, eight-unit complex, or buildings. But ultimately, we weren't able to, like I said, come to any conclusion of agreement. So, that's the staff recommendation. Happy answering questions. Hubble team is here tonight, has a presentation for you as well.
Any questions from Greg's side?
I have a question.
Your side.
Can you give us a sense of what's been built in this area in terms of timing? For example, when was the apartment project built? The other properties further south and west, when, when were those built? Has anything happened here?
Um, you know, I'm not sure of the timing. I could probably look into that and we come, come back up and should give you a response. But off the top of my head, I'm not familiar with the phasing of some of the other projects. But can I follow up with you on that?
Sure.
Okay.
Any other questions for Jason? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we're ready for the applicant.
Go ahead and switch to the computer.
And also, Jason, do you have the pointer in case he needs that? Jason, you have a pointer in case he needs that?
Oh, you need, would you like to...
Oh, thank you, Jason. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. My name is Joe Petruszynski. I am Senior Vice President of Hubble Realty Company located at 6,900 West Elm Parkway in West Des Moines. With me tonight is my colleague, Eric Bonenkamp. If many of you maybe have met Eric during the PUD process for Gray Station, he was instrumental in all the background work that went into that project and all the nice things that are happening there today. Also with me is the property owner, Greg Baker. Before we begin, I want to talk about this project in context of a history for the area. If you look at the map in front of you, you'll see that the corridor is full of multifamily development. About 10 years ago, eight to 10 years ago, as we were developing this corridor, we worked for, as a consultant for the, for Anom Housing on the corridor. We built our own development in Broadway Business Park, multifamily development. The area has a lot of multifamily, and we've developed in accordance with the market for multifamily. But what we were hearing from the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Hawkinsmith, Mrs. Connolly, and, and others on, are representatives from, of the Board of Supervisors, was we're getting concerned that along this Hubble corridor, that you don't have enough diverse housing. You don't have an opportunity for someone to move out of the rental housing into housing that allow them to set roots in Des Moines and stay here, something that could support a family, a little more square footage, different options for growing needs, different options for diverse people that live in this area. And they also came to Hubble Realty Company, other leaders in the community, you heard many of them speak today and said, "We want to see a mix of uses for the demographic and not something that just isolates to a certain income demographic, meaning only people who can rent or afford a high, high-density living condition." So, with that challenge in front of us, we, and with the success of our Summersfield development, our single-family development located just southeast of this location, we looked for other opportunities to expand the single-family type housing in this area to meet that challenge. And we luckily were able to find a property owner willing to meet market requirements for the, for the level of housing that could meet that, that step-up standard from, from the rental condition and turn it into an ownership condition where people can set roots and start a family. So, in studying this corridor, there were key aspects to it that led us to this as a solution for a different type of housing, single fam, more single-family housing on the corridor, and we'll explain the why. This is an example of the multifamily on the corridor, typical multifamily that we see in the Des Moines metropolitan area, especially as we move out of the central metro area. What we were challenged with are these key points: opportunity, diversity, income, diversified income levels in the area, provide move-up housing, provide value options for people who live there. And we believe which is, and we're looking for solutions, not only consistent with what the Board of Supervisors talked to us about, but those goals, as you can see on the slide, that are identified in your, your housing goals, goals in Plan DSM. If you look at the PUD in its full context, not just the area under consideration, it provides for a diverse range of housing to the, to the north and east. It allows for the apartment-style living. There's more capacity to build more housing in that area. It allows for townhomes to, to the, to the north and east. But what it doesn't have is that, that other tier of housing, single-family, that's more in the affordable range for workforce families. If you look at the PUD overall, it is a nice blend of different houses along the corridor. This is a map showing the different types of uses and blended densities that are, that could be allowed under a revised PUD. When we're looking at the Des Moines area, we're not just looking, we're not just looking at it as a, as a development solution for Hubble Realty Company, we're looking at it as a solution for our buyers. And who are the buyers that are buying single-family housing in this area of your community? We know from our experience of developing in River Woods, we know from developing in Summersfield, and from speaking with the realtors in the area, that this is a very diverse area, something we're proud of in the city of Des Moines. We have a lot of families in this area that buy homes that are Nepalese, Taiwanese, Somali, Hispanic, Indian, African-American, Caucasian, a blend of different backgrounds and, and people that, that live here. And it says in our Des Moines housing goals that, that we should provide a diversity of housing to accommodate residents of all ages, income levels, household sizes, and cultural backgrounds. What's nice about this proposal is it continues on that goal. When we reached out to our buyers in this area, we asked them, "Why, why are you choosing new single-family in this area over renovating existing housing stock? What drives you to, to want a single-family home?" And, and things that I've learned in this process from the realtor community is, is diverse cultures have different needs. They're looking for new housing that addresses their, I think it's called Feng Shui or Feng Shui, so that the house meets specific dynamics for their either religious or, or value system. The religion, some of the religions dictate which way the house must face, and, and the components that are in that house, special bathroom facilities and other facilities to accommodate their, their needs. School is very important to the families that live in this area. They, they need proximity to the school system to either walk or to quickly get, quickly get to that school system because transportation may be limited in their families, which, which they also need access to transportation from a single-family status too. For example, we have a doctor that lives in one of our communities. He bought three homes for his family. He's, 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 he's an immigrant to the United States. Instead of buying a big fancy home somewhere else in the community, he wanted three homes, one for his mom and dad to age in place, one for himself and, and his, and his family, and one for his brother's family. Community and keeping family together for our buyers is extremely important, and they want to, to have newer houses, things available to them that the family doesn't have to worry about or have to take care of. So, the new condition is very important to them, collating a family and making an environment that's easy for that family to thrive. Another interesting thing is, is a lot of the families that live in these areas are crash buyers. One of the strongest voices for the need for this type of housing, especially on the ranch side, and, and an affordable level of housing in this area, is people who wish to age in place, that live in the area but want to stay in the area. What we're finding is, like my mom and dad, want, instead of the washer and dryer being in the basement, they need it on the first floor because they're having trouble navigating the stairs. They need kitchens that are more accessible to either their walkers or wheelchairs. They, they're looking, they don't have a walk-in closet in their bedroom attached to a bathroom to make it easier to get dressed. These new homes do. So, they're looking for opportunities that allow them to stay in the neighborhood but continue to age in place. Our proposal offers that solution to them. They also are, can be limited on their ability to drive to their doctor's appointments, to head downtown to the hospitals. This location is on a bus route that provides that opportunity. You heard it today in the testimony from people in the room that workforce and affordability is extremely important. The level of homes that we're proposing this development are between, on average, 230 to 275 at the highest. Of course, people can get more than that in Summersfield, but that's typically the range of housing. These, this type of housing supports our, as you heard, our nurses, our doctors, our electricians, the new doctor I talked about, who wants to co, co, co-locate a family, teachers, firefighters, municipal workers. We had a, 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 we have municipal workers that live in Summersfield, the service industry, a wide variety of our workforce that needs this type of housing. Another aspect that people don't think about with workforce housing is what this offers, is the garage space, not necessarily for a vehicle, but for the work trailer or for their supplies inside that home. Older homes don't have that opportunity ready for them to move into these new houses What we hear time and time again is that once people can provide, have the opportunity to buy and own a home, and once their kids get into the school systems, they set roots in that community, they establish their careers, they further their culture, they further their family, they establish neighbors and friends, and they build on not just the taxable value of Des Moines, but the cultural, cultural value of this community. That's why we think that diverse housing in this area is so important. Let's not just people, limit people to a rental choice, let's give them the opportunity to move up and grow. And we believe this is a solution to do that, mixed with those other opportunities that are right next door. We believe what we're going to call Grover Woods is consistent with your plan, is consistent with the needs that were expressed tonight and, and are in your comprehensive plan, and we believe the single-family solution is exactly what Des Moines needs to build on value of this area. We respectfully ask for your support and to move this forward to City Council. And as you heard from the people who testified, this is the exact kind of housing we need to make, make Des Moines a more inclusive place, a more inviting place, a place of opportunity, and a place of increasing value. With me tonight, and we can go into detail over the different homes and information provided you tonight, is Eric Bonenkamp. He has the technical expertise behind everything we're proposing today. I welcome any questions you have about our proposal for this, this area.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Petruszynski. You haven't been here for a while, so I haven't practiced your name.
You can call me Joe P., Madam Chair. That works just as well.
You got things too, so I'm going to try to get your name. Any questions on this side? Over here? All right.
Thank you.
So, at this time, is there anyone else in the room who wishes to speak in favor of this project?
Hi, my name is Greg Baker. I live at 2709 East 29th Street. I am just here in support of Hubble Realty and hope you give them fair consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, is there anyone in the room who, who has concerns about the project? Jason, you need to come back and address anything?
The only thing I would, I just add, like, the apartment complex Mike and I were visiting, you know, that was probably five-plus years ago. That's probably the most recent thing in that vicinity. I think some of the other stuff around there happened prior to that, so just give you a sense of what's happened the last few years. That's Mike. You want to chime in?
Yeah. Just to clarify, those were all built when we had multifamily tax abatement along the corridor. And as Joe had pointed out, that there were concerns as we headed into Plan DSM about the density on the corridor right now because of infrastructure questions about the roadway and, and school capacity, things like that. Ultimately, we ended up retracting the citywide multifamily tax abatement and started a targeted multifamily tax abatement plan that now is basically what we call the spider map. It's kind of the downtown overlay district with transit corridors coming out of the downtown where multifamily tax abatement is available by right. What we do now for outlying areas is there has to be an urban renewal plan, and TIF has to be decided for those, but it's not a by-right incentive to build multifamily on the corridor. What we do offer in this area and anywhere else is basically the single-family tax abatement is available for up to eight-unit rowhouse configurations. And so, from our perspective, that's a low-medium-density product type. It doesn't have to all be eight units, but it's up to eight units. And we felt that we do have incentives that encourage a low-medium-density housing product that we think next to transit corridor would be appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, Mike, looking at the parcel that we see here, you said you've had meetings with... with Hubble and back and forth. I'm imagining that you were tossing compromises to them on their design, and I'm having a little hard time understanding what the compromise was that was rejected.
There was no alternative proposed. We did suggest that they do maybe the, some detached single-family, small lot on the north portion of the property, kind of along that drain each way. That's a tributary, if you want to call it, for Four Mile Creek, that runs through the property, it's that dark line.
The zigzag thing?
Zigzag line on the north. We had suggested possibly adding some small attached product on the southern portion and, and eastern portion of the property, as you abut the multifamily residential, and as you abut the transit corridor. We'd thrown out maybe a 50/50 mix.
That's what I was trying to get to, how much single-family could they have?
We threw out like a 50/50 mix as a, as a alternative, and again, that was a compromise to try and address recognizing their desire for some single-family, and they're running out of lots in the Summersfield development, but also trying to meet at least the objectives of our comp plan, which would call for higher than four units an acre of detached single-family along a transit corridor.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mike? All right, I'll close the public hearing, Commissioner. What is your pledge?
I'll move the staff proposal then. My feeling about that is I'm sympathetic to what Hubble is saying. I think it does make sense that there be mixed housing there. At the same time, I think that an amendment to the comprehensive plan is significant. This is transit corridor, and putting low-density or lower-density housing can certainly harm a transit corridor in a, in a significant way. So my feeling is that that decision, if it's going to be made, should be made by City Council, not by us. So that's why I'm suggesting that we, or I'm going with the staff recommendation to deny the PUD.
Right, thank you. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor?
Can I make a comment? I'm not going to support the motion. My gosh, we just talked about single-family homes and affordability, and here's an opportunity, and we're saying it's not good enough. When I lived south of Grand in a very lovely home, I had a neighbor who took the bus every day and lived in a single-family home. That's not to say that people don't take public transit. And I always think that the use of the ground is what, what the demand is. The ground has been available, we're building apartment buildings everywhere, an apartment developer hasn't stepped up who wants to do this, and there's a single-family that surrounds this with a very small window of access to Hubble Avenue. It takes you back into the back area, so... We struggle with zonings mostly regarding industrial properties and that type of thing, but never to take ground that might be an apartment to single-family. So I'm, I'm not going to support the motion. I, I'm satisfied with single-family.
Madam Chair, I drive the corridor fairly regularly, and I'm struck by, over the last 10 years, the number of multifamily residences that have been constructed along the corridor. I found the graphic that Mr. Petrozinski showed with other multi-residential properties along the corridor to be rather persuasive, and if we're talking about mix, perhaps single-family dwellings do have a place in all this. So I tend to agree with my colleague on the right.
Anyone else? I also agree with these two gentlemen's comments, and I think the cards that we received from the surrounding neighbors supported, know exactly what you're saying, and I do, Chris, you know, this is my passion, but I do believe that the school in the area, this is a good place to build that type of housing, so I too.
Could you refresh my memory on process? If this motion fails, and we don't know if it will, but if this motion fails, do we entertain another motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't that correct? The question is, if the motion fails, will there be an opportunity for another motion?
Yes, and I would also suggest that, as there are no conditions stated in the staff recommendation, that might be a consideration regarding a continuance if needed.
Say that, what was the last part again?
I didn't hear you.
Yeah.
Try again. Because there are no conditions stated in the recommendation, it might be a good thing to consider a continuance, possibly to the second August meeting, given that the first one is the second continuation of the public hearing on the zoning code.
So you're suggesting is if, and we don't know if it is, but if the motion fails, that we then move this item to our second meeting in August?
Yes.
That's your recommendation?
Okay, can I just add? So I, I just want to make it clear that our job, I don't think, is always to do the thing that we believe to be correct. Our job is to understand where we fall in the process, and where democratically-elected people fall in the process. I just don't think we have the information to know that, that single-family is the, is the right thing to put here, and I think that, and that's why, again, I, I feel like we should leave that decision to City Council.
Okay, thank you for sharing. So there's a motion on the floor to approve the stack recommendation, parts A, B, and C. All of those in favor of the motion, if you could signify by raising your hand? Thank you. All those who oppose the motion, please signify by raising your hand. So the motion fails, is there a recommendation on this side of the table?
I have a question, before maybe a motion. I too am in favor. It's really hard for me in Des Moines to not seriously consider more single-family homes. It's just fundamentally difficult for me to not really want that. Size aside, garages aside, all that stuff, all aside. So I guess where I would love for this to go, and I don't know if it's about continuance, I don't know if it's about, can we approve, you know, basically A and B? But I do, I would love to see staff and Hubble work together on this particular PUD and site plan. I personally am in favor of single-family homes. I don't know that it needs to be 50/50 with other stuff, I, so I don't know if, if we as a board should have a proposal and vote on, like I said, A and B? Or do we just let this continue and staff and Hubble? I mean, it's sort of a question for all you folks.
We wouldn't be able to break it down and, I'm sorry?
I don't believe we, it'd be prudent to vote on the, the first part, and then have that kind of be in limbo, and then, you know, I would just continue the whole item, let us come back, and then you would vote on it all together at one time. I think that's the best way procedurally to do it. If you did want to continue it, and you wanted to give us some direction as to what you're thinking, and that could be a part of your motion, as far as like, if you had specific ideas of what you'd want incorporated, or anybody else?
I, I guess thoughts I would put out there is, you know, it's pretty easy to read this stuff here, where they're talking about sizes and garages and square footages, and I think that's where the conversation needs to lie, see if there's sort of some, some compromise or agreement there, obviously based on the preceding presentation we had, the future zoning ordinance potentially, and staff has an opinion about size and garages and all those things, and I know that, you know, Hubble has their own. Ultimately, I think having more new housing, single-family housing stock, and adding good property value is, I think, the intent. I think most people would agree with that. So I don't know that I've given you a clear opinion, but some opinion.
I would say that your position is to focus, when we come back, on some design standards for single-family, that the essence-
That's where my opinion would be, and...
There were a number of hands that went up in opposition. I think that the sentiment is, let's explore the single-family thing as much as possible, and allow Hubble to exploit, if you will, the single-family in the area as much as possible, within reason. You guys can work something out.
Okay.
Don't you think?
Sure.
Yeah.
So...
And bring it back.
Haven't we always? I think we always have.
Okay, so then, who has a question?
I guess I'm kind of curious if the, if the applicant is on board with this conversation or not.
Good point.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, as you know, to get this together and get started this year, you know, it's been a rainy season, it could rain again. We get, time is of the essence, and we talked about in the zoning process, we're speeding up time because it costs money. So here's what I would suggest, too. Rather than tabling, tabling it and waiting two weeks, could the direction of this commission, which is within reason, you've done it for me in the past, recommend, give me a recommendation to council to move forward and work with staff, with council, on parameters, whatever that may be, for, for architectural guidelines. What's proposed to you today is exactly what we're doing in Summersfield. So we're not trying to recreate the wheel, it's been a highly successful development. We want to mimic that here, so we're just asking to do more of the same and grow the community like we always have. So we're just asking for it to advance forward with that parameters, if that would be suitable to you. Thank you.
So Greg, do you want to elevate?
Madam Chair, if I may, I have another question of staff. If we move this for approval, we're approving a PUD conceptual plan. What, what details aren't yet worked out in the conceptual plan that could be worked out in the future?
Well, you know, your conceptual plan, it doesn't have, you know, grading and necessarily like detailed engineering stuff, but what we have tried to do in Des Moines with PUDs is to have like the base parameters of design standards and general lot development standards, bulk regulations figured out at the conceptual plan stage. So while there's a lot of things that can be kind of pushed off to the development plan, as far as specific design things, it's good to, at the conceptual plan level, at least have kind of your parameters set. So, and specific to what, kind of what we're talking about right now, I would say that we would want some language figured out to be incorporated in the conceptual plan with regard to, you know, if design standards, size standards, setbacks, that sort of stuff. You know, the things that could wait for the development plan are the exact number of lots, the exact location of the, you know, the streets could move a little bit, those sorts of things, that more of the engineering.
Madam Chair, I'm confused because that's not in the proposal. So I'm not understanding. Why-
Can you come back up a little bit?
I'm completely confused because we're following a PUD process, and that's in your proposal, so then why are we stating that it's not in there? Because we, it goes PUD with those design concept regulations, which was submitted in accordance with the requirements, and then when we get into the preliminary plat, we'll be back in front of you, and we'll go through those details. So in this stage of our, of our due process, I, I think we're meeting that threshold, so I'm, I'm confused and concerned why we'd have a delay when that information is in front of you today.
Yeah, please advise us.
I find this argument very rich, given that we heard from Hubble earlier that they wanted to continue the PUD process in the new zoning code. The purpose of a PUD is different than a regular rezoning, the purpose is to negotiate with the city on the parameters and conditions that are associated with the development. There, as you've heard, negotiations have failed at this point. It sounds to me from, comments from some of the commissioners, that you would like to see negotiations continue, which again, is the purpose of a PUD. So our staff is not prepared to present those conditions to you tonight, and need time to do that. If you want to approve the PUD as submitted, you can, but again, there has not been negotiation or at least agreement as to negotiation on that matter. Thank you.
Are you looking for a motion? I, let's see where this goes. I would move approval of A and B, and allow, rather than deny, the concept plan with the requirement that, that, when is, when would they go to council?
The question is, when will we go to council?
When would this go to council?
Oh wait, I have that.
With the requirement that the developer work with staff prior to council to work out details on architecture, whatever the issues are, I, I'm sensing we're in agreement, or generally in agreement that we like the single-family. So there's no longer debate about single-family versus a mix of single-family and townhomes, but there are some particulars that might be of concern to staff, maybe not. So at least that requires dialogue with the developer prior to it going to City Council.
Okay, let me make sure I understand what you just proposed. So you are, your motion is to approve A and B, and that, so counter to the denial, you want to approve it, correct? With staff working with the developer on specific details of specifications and so forth?
Yeah.
Pretty much?
Yes.
Okay, and what about C?
I'm sorry?
So you would approve C?
Yes.
Okay. Questions about this motion?
Two questions. So I don't quite understand where the, working together with staff happens?
Between now and City, City Council. So they have a week or so to-
So that, if I understand this correctly, then the recommendation would advance to the council on August 5th? Is it August 5th or August 19th meeting? That it would advance?
August 5th.
August 5th, okay. So does that help?
Yeah, well, one other thing I just kind of want to offer to the board, because we know that phone apps never lie. It appears as though, and Joe might correct me, but kind of the home pricing over in the Summersfield area is all of them north of 220. I don't know if that's accurate, but that's kind of what it looks like here, some 250, some 240. And if that's the case, you know, that is a positive marker that we're after, at least I am. We're not building $150,000 homes here. So it's food for thought.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor.
I don't understand the motion, can you state it again, please, Michael?
Sure.
So we're going to look at these staff recommendations, right? Is that what you're talking about, A, B, and C? Or you're talking about something else?
Well, there are no staff recommendations, it's denial, and staff is, staff is saying, we want the ability to look at some of the details and negotiate some of those details. The developer has an interest in advancing this now.
I heard that.
But yet, we want to protect, we want the ability of staff to have dialogue with them and have some influence, and that can happen between now and council, and, and allow council to make the final decision. On, if there are discrepancies or issues, disagreements on square footage, or billing materials, or whatever it is, council has the ultimate authority anyway. So I'm just providing that window of time for that to occur.
Right, so if we take Part A, staff recommends be found not in conformance with Plan DSM land use map, well, that's probably true. Part B, staff recommends denial of the proposed amendment, you want to-
I see what you're saying.
You want to allow the proposed amendment?
That is correct.
And then to C, staff recommends denial of the proposed PUD conceptual plan, is that where the talking occurs?
This is why we have an attorney in our midst.
Okay, so-
Thank you.
But are you going to amend your motion?
He just did.
Okay, so we're going to go with the amended- Okay, so we're going to go with the amended version by Jack of Part A is correct, or would be, we would be affirming Part A, right? And then Part C, we would, instead of denying, we would allow the proposed amendment, and Part C, we would approve the proposed PUD.
With the direction that Mike had concerning dialogue in the next, well, before August 5th, because Joe wants this to happen, chop, chop.
Thank you. Okay, everybody on this side of the table, good with, Greg, Jones? No questions. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your right, raising your hand. Is there any, was there any unanimous? Okay. Oh, is there any opposition? Sorry. Thank you very much. We are now ready for item number nine.
Think it would.
A minute for people to clear out.
Please switch the dot.
All right.
Tyler.
Item number nine is request from Grasshopper Properties for actions regarding property located at 3908 Lower Beaver Road. A would be determination whether proposed rezoning is in conformance with Plan Des Moines, creating our tomorrow, or, and B, rezone property from R161 family low-density residential district to R22 family residential district to allow for demolition of the existing single-family dwelling and redevelopment with a two-family dwelling.
Aerial identifying the subject property southwest corner of the intersection of Lower Beaver Road and Seneca Avenue to the north. Response cards are being passed around. This is a response map. Subject property contains a single-family dwelling. This was damaged by a tree collapsing on it. The proposal is to remove that and to construct duplex. To do that, the request before you is necessary. Quickly, I'll show you the applicant's conceptual idea for their project. So this is a site plan. So each unit would be oriented to a different street. Rendered view of the building. The, I think what, I want to go back to the aerial. A couple of things to point out. Lower Beaver Road in this area is a bus route, so we have transit. There are also two duplexes to the south, so we do have, and I believe there's more, but in our time in prepping, that was the ones that we were able to confirm. So there are other duplexes in the area. With that, you know, staff believes that this is an appropriate rezoning. We're supportive of the request. We do have some design standards that we're recommending. A lot of these are standard things that you see frequently, that whether it's single-family or duplex of the projects. The, I can walk you through those. You can also, if you have specific questions, just, you know, we're trying, we want to make sure that they build what they're showing us. And we have some material quality standards, having a porch or masonry, their design complies with that. We have some language about trim, shingles, street trees. We do have a minimum size requirement. The proposal complies with that, actually exceeds it by a little bit. And then just some standard language about where to put mechanical equipment, if that ends up having some, and then also accessory buildings and whatnot. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
What's the point of differences between you and the property owner?
I'm not aware that there is any. I can't speak for them, but we had some cards that came in opposition, so we didn't recommend it as consent item.
There you go.
That explains it. That explains it, thank you.
All right, there's no other questions for Jason, applicant?
Do you know if the areas meet your areas?
The square footage?
Yeah.
Yeah, the design they submitted is slightly larger than the minimum.
All right, I believe we're ready for the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Steve Grasshopper, 5637, Rickers Court, Johnston, Iowa. My wife Tracy and I are Grasshopper Properties. We've read the staff recommendations. We're in complete agreement with them, and we ask for your consent and approval tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice way to end a meeting.
Gold star.
Okay, well, I guess by process, is there anyone who wishes to support in the room, the applicant? Seeing none. Is there anyone who expresses any opposition?
Negative.
Seeing none. I'll close the pub, I'm just going to close the public hearing. And then Greg, do you have a motion?
All of staff.
All right. All of those in favor of the staff recommendations, Part A, which find the proposed R22 family residential district in conformance with our Plan Des Moines, future land use designation of low-density residential, Part B, approval of the proposed rezoning from R161 family low-density residential to R22 family residential. The following conditions are 1 through 9. All of those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Got it? Was there any opposition? No objections? Thank you so much, and thank you for being patient, Mr. Grasshopper. Any other business, Mike, before the commission, that concludes our public hearings?
City manager's out of the office tomorrow, so there's not a lunch meeting with the person. I want to thank you for holding your public hearing tonight. The second one will be in two weeks. We do anticipate going to the steering committee on July 25th. And at that point, hopefully having some discussion on any amendments that would be possible to code. I know I said we present them today. The decision was made that we needed to talk to the steering committee and then make a recommendation on any changes at the next meeting. So that's what we'll, we'll try and get those out to you as early as we possibly can, but can't guarantee it. So, yes.
Well, one thing I might offer, suggest, is all the stuff we heard, if you wouldn't mind, if possible, sort of saying, hey, these are the 10 things we heard. These are things that we feel could be possibly discussed more, or, you know, looked at. These are things that we feel strongly in opposition to, even though it was a comment. For me, that would help.
Sure.
Because it just sort of becomes loud to me after a while. If you're willing, I don't know what your process is between now and the next one, but that would be helpful, especially from a presentation point of view, if the same folks come back.
Yep. We can outline, we will certainly outline recommended changes at the next meeting. Just recognize there also may be changes even after it leaves the planning commission's hands. So that's part of the public hearing process. And again, tonight was pretty monumental. This isn't easy. If it was done, if it was easy, it would have been done before now. Say that again. So I appreciate your patience, and we'll look forward to another hearing on August 1st.
So Mike, on the affordability piece, there were 13 speakers. I have pages of notes. I kept worrying that some of the comments that we were hearing were influenced by the economics that directly affected the groups that were there. Let's just say, they benefit from the changes, not just the buyers, not just the people who would fill the houses. I'm into objective data, and I know you must have considered a lot of it in coming to your recommendations and conclusions. We probably need to revisit that a little bit. That's just my spin on this. Thank you for the work that you've done. You're right, it's not easy. And thanks.
I have a comment, if I may. I was very pleased with tonight. It was a very respectful audience. There were fewer people here than I thought there would be.
Couldn't find a place to park.
And there was definitely a common theme about affordability, square footage of houses and garages and basements. And to me, other than that, there was one fellow lobbying for the use of vinyl siding. And Hubble offered five specific things. And outside of that, it was a common theme.
Right. The one comment that the woman had about a basement or a garage, I thought was an interesting idea to explore.
But the risk of, at the risk of having the hearing opened again tonight, we've made plenty of notes, and we'll bring recommendations at the next meeting.
Can you, because you sent some change, word changes, wordsmithing. Can we have the chart how it originally was, and then your, what you've wordsmithed? You know what I mean?
I think those are the changes that you had. I think...
Minor revisions.
Right. I know, but then you have to go back and look at what the original, I mean, I can do it. It doesn't bother me. But do you all think that would be helpful to have?
I think not, we will be able to have minor revisions. Major revisions, maybe we can do that. I just, I just...
Okay. Okay, this is the second one.
So it will be more substantial.
Okay, that's fine. Okay. Any commissioner, any other? All right, meeting adjourned.